Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of calendar year 2022. Our January City Council meeting. We are one week late due to a lot of different factors, all of which have been in the news lately, COVID and the snow and all of this, and I hope we're about done with all of both of those. But welcome everybody here in person tonight, and also those that are joining in or watching in on YouTube, right?
Yes.
That's hard for me to say. But anyway, we're here. We will, we are one person short tonight. We already were one person short with the resignation of Brandy, and then Christie's not able to be with us tonight. So we do have, maybe don't have quantity, but we do have quality. So if you'll bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this day and for the opportunity you've given us to gather here tonight. We pray that you'll continue to bless our people. We pray that you'll bless those that are sick with COVID or whatever else they may be struggling with. We pray that you'll heal them and restore them to their health. We know that we have lost a lot of people here in the last few weeks to death. We pray that you'll continue to bless those families as they grieve. We ask now that you go with us tonight and give us guidance and help us to make the right decisions. Forgive us of our many sins. Amen. All right, should have a set of minutes there for the December 21 meeting, last year's meeting. Y'all had a chance to look at those?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We were scheduled to have the election to fill the empty council seat tonight. We're going to, I'm understanding, we're going to defer that until next month. Hopefully, we'll have a full house or a full complement of people to vote on the sixth person. So we'll proceed tonight with order of business and move right along. We've come to that portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address us with anything they may have. So I know there are at least two members of the public here tonight that would like to address us, perhaps more. Ms. Dowd is smiling at me, so something tells me it may be more. Y'all came in different doors, or no story here, is there?
Do I have to tell?
No, no. Remember, this is going out for posterity, so you may not want to put it on there. Sure.
Yeah, Tim, and I brought up, my wife brought up that information on over here on Commerce.
We did.
Okay.
Got it.
That's just what I wanted to bring up.
Appreciate it.
So that's out of Mutsit, which the state has accepted.
Do what now?
That's out of Mutsit Regulations.
Uh huh.
State has adopted those regulations to use, so then it would take the, what do you call it, liability off the city if you use those.
Okay. Well, that leads me to a question. What liability do you think we have now?
Now that, well, dealing with the bigger city that's, now that it's been brought up as a problem, if there's something that hasn't occurred or been done by, would that put the liability on the city?
On the back on the city because it was brought up? I don't know. And no action was taken.
Because that was a different state at the time, so.
I guess I'm not arguing.
Yeah.
What is the problem?
Well, the Commerce.
No, it was Elm and.
And Commerce.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about, but it's been that way for 50 years, so.
Without this being brought up as a problem by somebody, and it's not as a record there or something, would that affect, I don't know.
I don't either.
And without it, would, here, I don't think, no.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Probably would depend on who the lawyers are and who's on the jury.
Exactly.
Okay, but thank you for bringing that. I did look at it and got it in here as a matter of fact, as it looks like I got most everything else on in there, but occasionally I weed that out about once every six months, and it wasn't time this month, so it's got a bunch in there. Anything else?
Yep.
All right, I know John and Austin have got a present. It's time, John, public business.
It's time.
Speak now, forever hold your peace, or at least till the next meeting.
More than one copy, Mayor, of that handout one. Please check my seat, because I need one.
There's an old stack I'm writing.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, you don't have to read that to us. Just tell us what you want to do.
This is in reference to the Jazz Festival. Essentially, what we are wanting to discuss and ask council to consider is we want to extend the Jazz Festival for two nights this year. We did this years ago, and it reverted back to a one-year thing. It's a little bit of a brave financial stretch for us. The budget will go from $40,000 to $65,000. The budget in '03 and '04, those are the years, Maynard Ferguson was here, and Wynton Mars, not Wynton, his dad, Ellis, Ellis Marcellus was here. We had budgets of that size.
Mm-hmm.
What essentially, I can read through this, but I think that covers everything, so I'll try to paraphrase it, Mayor, as much as I can.
Yeah, just do that.
Make sure that we don't get folks confused. The shows will start on Friday, which is the 15th, and Saturday the 16th. On Friday, the show will begin at 5:00 p.m. and go till 9:00, and then on Saturday, it will start at 3:00 and go to, well, I say 9:00.
Last act starts at 9:00.
Last act starts at 9:00, yes. That's a total of 12 acts. We thought we'd back it off a little later on Friday because of the business situation. And essentially, we will be setting up stages for the event. There are now two stages, the professional ones like we used last year, and they will have to be set up on Thursday. We are going to try to do that around 6 o'clock on Thursday evening to minimize any problems. Once that stage, those two stages go up, the inner circle of the square will have to be closed. Now, that means the Elm Street that comes there, the corner, will be allowed to come on out to Main Street, and Main Street will be left open. Just the inner circle is what we would have to close because of wires and the light that you have to deal with. So those are the corner styles of what we're looking at here tonight, is that when you close it, the times will close it, and let me add this too, we will close the square about an hour before each of the nights. In other words, if one starts at 5:00, we'll close at 4:00. If one starts at 4:00, we'll close the square off at 3:00. And that means shut it off there at the back and shut it off down where Pearl intersects with Main down where the hardware store is. That would have to occur. And in, along that same line, in the reverse, when we're done Friday night, as soon as that crowd clears out, we will open those two streets and leave them that way until we close them again on Saturday afternoon. And so, and the same way, at the end of the show on Saturday night, we will have to clean up down there. There'll be some, as always, some booths and that sort of thing will have to get out of the way before we can even open those two streets up, just as a safety hazard. The stages will be shut down Saturday night to a point, but you still probably are going to want to maintain the closure of that inner circle Saturday night. They will be in Sunday to remove the stages. So that is essentially what we are, what we're looking at. This is a stretch for us. I can give you quickly the acts, just to show you kind of what the situation is at this time. Joey DeFrancisco is our lead act on Saturday night, and on Friday night, Eddie Daniels is a clarinetist will be. They're both $15,000 a piece. The Vanfrieses will be coming back, and Bob McChesley, the tribonist we had. Those will be the four major acts. And we've been told, in fact, Ernest made a phone call to him, said he's back this year. And that'd be very exciting. As you all know, Ernest is a Watertown native and played for Ray Charles and several other of the big names years ago. And when we listen to him play, you know, you know where he's been. The others are also big name acts, and we're excited. It's all about the money. And the importance of tonight and your decision is we have not signed any contracts with anybody until we know you guys are satisfied with the way we're trying to run this thing. If, let's say you gave us permission tonight for the second night under the parameters that I've given, and I want you to carefully read that when you go home, because if there's something that we've left out, we need to work on it. But we've got to sign these contracts. These folks have got schedules. One of them has a European tour that we're trying to work around and just crazy stuff. So as soon as I get the approval, we're going full blast for money and the website will come alive and the whole nine yards will.
He left a bump at European tour if he's going to come to Watertown.
We were impressed with that.
Yeah.
You got any questions? Anybody that I've not covered something? I don't think anything of your standpoint you could share?
I have one, John. What date did, what time did you say they would have to close down the square?
We will close the square about an hour before each event. So that means on Friday, we will, we will close at, let's see.
Four. But you said the inner circle you would have to close before?
The inner circle, if you look at that map, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah. That will have to close before then. That's got to be closed for them to put the stages up. We'll keep that inner circle closed because of that, and we'll have to, and because they will only put up the basics Thursday afternoon. That's the stages themselves, the big physical stages. Then they'll come back on Friday about 10 o'clock Friday morning and start the electrical wiring, laying all the cabling, setting up the sound booth where they operate the electronic. We had such great results out of that video wall last year. We're going to, we would like to put up two of those, but we're, that's a budgetary thing. All of that's got to be set up. And then the big closing, the one hour before, is just before the acts start. That's shutting it totally down.
Right. So the inner, you're saying would be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
Thursday.
Thursday night. So all day Friday, all day Saturday?
All day Saturday. There's not much way, that's, that's the twist that we have to work with. And as you know, Austin is Chamber of Commerce president, and she's been trying to get a little bit of the feel around the square of some of the businesses.
Well, I'm going to interrupt you because you sound doom and gloom right there.
That was a question I was going to ask.
Yeah. So I, on Friday, I went around and spoke with every business owner on the square and even notified some of the residents that are living on the square, and every single one of them, I got two thumbs up. So they're all excited for it to be a two-day. The only concern that came out of it was Anne at the fitness center wanted to make sure that our staffers from the sound system was very aware that the gym does not close so people can come and go. But otherwise, everybody, she included, were all very, very excited about this moving to a two-day and no, no issues.
And what we did for her last year, along the line to follow up on that, we talked to her last year, and she is actually a 24-hour-a-day business.
Yep.
They've got cars and they come and go at all hours.
Right.
And we told her that if she would notify all, she knows where it went, to notify those folks if they had a problem, to notify, let them know, I am a customer here, and we notified the fire department staff around the stage, anybody that comes up, let them get in there. And so I think that will work out. I just want to be clear on those closing times, because if I don't read that part of it, and I get filed up, just to really read that through and through.
I believe, I believe we got it.
And make sure we're, let me see if I answered anything, Mike. I know we've got busy.
What kind of hindrance did this put on our police department?
What kind of what?
Police and fire hindrance, like, I know that most of them were working and they couldn't be out. Like, how do we compensate for that?
It used to be a lot harder when they were on the square. It's a lot easier now when it's over here. And that's worked pretty well. The big thing here, Laura, I think, is giving plenty of notice.
Right.
And now that we're in January for a July event, I think that'll work. We've had a couple events three or four years ago where they didn't come together until two or three days before Saturday, and
Yeah.
I was getting a call on Friday night from merchants saying, we didn't know anything about this. And so.
Yeah, I feel like our merchants know.
If it gets approved, make sure at the next meeting, though, they know it's a done deal that we approve it. Okay. If we approve it.
I have a couple questions from the public. The first being, so will this mean the inner circle will be closed for two and a half days, given if this happens? That's the first one.
Yes.
Second one would be, do we, do we know if the one day you committed sales tax dollars should be able to happen a second day?
It did. I looked at that last year.
Yeah.
On our tax and.
Yeah. If people are here spending money, it's got to be favorable.
Yeah, I will suggest that our food vendors, you picked some great food vendors this last time. They were, you know, top notch. Just know the amount of people they're expecting because we ran out of food on Saturday.
Yeah.
By like six or seven. I mean, it was early.
We had the weather, unfortunately, the term, I actually had two of the food vendors that were supposed to show, and because of the weather, they backed out at the last minute, and so they didn't get their money back. We kept that, and to try to prevent that from happening, I made it very clear, it's non-refundable if you back out at the last second. And then I even called them and let them know the next day. Everybody sold out. I mean, the coffee shop, we were selling. We didn't have any more food in the building. So I think, I think now that they understand what we're expecting, I don't expect that to be the same problem this year, and we will have more food trucks available. We've already, the ones that were there made it clear that they're coming back, and the ones that missed out made it clear that they're going to be there, and I don't think they'll have that problem.
You had some really great coverage this last year.
Thank you.
Let me to answer that question, Grant. The first question you did is, I understand it, and John, you and I talked about it the other day, you're going to close the square on Thursday night about 6:00 or so.
Yes.
They're going to come in after the businesses.
That's the inner circle.
Yeah, the inner circle.
The inner circle.
And then Friday all day, and then Saturday up to the close. So not, not quite two and a half days, but almost.
It's close.
Yeah, it's close.
It's, it's a stretch for them to most.
Yeah, yeah. But I think that's why it's important to give enough notice so that people know and they can plan their schedule.
And as you and I talked, we, one other problem that we're trying to iron out, we had a problem with golf carts, as you know. We use a lot of, we use them extensively.
Yeah.
Golf carts, if we have an accident on the street with one of those.
Let's, let's take that up some other night. All right.
That's fine. We've got that.
I don't want to go there tonight.
Okay.
We got plenty of time to talk about that between now and July. If we're, you know, so the, the issue that's before us tonight is, do we approve closing the square? There is a history of this. When there was a two-day event, we did do this. Then they went to the one day, and then a couple of years, we didn't have anything. So there's a history of doing it, but again, I think it's got to be done right. I'm confident that these people will do it right, and that we give enough notice to our merchants to take care of that. So that's the issue. So what's the pleasure, counsel?
I make a motion that we're, we go through the two and a half days.
Approve the proposal.
Approve the proposal.
Yeah, I'll second that. I mean, I worked it with John last year. It was a good event, and I think going to two days will be an improvement.
I heard a lot of good comments from last year, so I.
It's become, it was in the, in the 2000s, a signature event here. It really was. And it can be again, I think, with the right people operating.
We had two at 3,000. That was a good crowd then. We, it was light last year. Maybe a thousand when the train came. We might have had a peak out.
Now, John, we had one year there where Sam Hatcher had it in the Democrat at 25,000. And I didn't do anything to discourage him. It was a good crowd.
I like to think Sam got his, got his zeros and.
He may have. It says Sam at your paper, at that time, Sam at your paper. If you said we had 25,000, we had 25,000.
The train will be here again this year.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to catch.
Cross your finger on the money, guys. We got, we got to run hard.
Now, you got another proposal.
I got another one. I'm not done yet. Why, I have you all. So on top of Jazz, because that's its own, we have one, two, three other events. We know the mile-long yard sale, what that requires, so I'm not really bringing that up here. Nothing really to report there. That's kind of the same one of the mill. But we do have three other events. March 26th is a Fickies Car Show. That is the day that we have a train planning to come to town. Last year, we did a car show in the fall, but they showed up in droves, a lot more than I was expecting, which was excellent. This is the folks that organize the car show that happens on the bank parking lots on Friday nights.
Yes.
They're local, and they want, you know, to see this take off. Well, they've already put some dealers out, and they're expecting our call numbers to be totally blown away, which is great, because again, that brings people to the area. You talk about sales tax dollars. I mean, that's, that's excellent. But that is, March 26th is what we're proposing. Then May 14th is the artisan marketplace, which is basically local artisans that would set up on the square. These are all, these are all on the square, so it's all the exact same, the inner square, not affecting Main, not affecting Elm, affecting the inner square. So May 14th, artisan marketplace, that'd be again, vendors, local vendors, especially if they make something. Like, we had a lady that came, but she makes pottery, and she was doing pottery on the square. That was really cool. Food vendors again. And then jump to the fall, September 3rd, a bluegrass festival, which we did very, I wasn't pleased with it this, last year, but we've already dissected that significantly, and I think, I think it will be incredible this go-around. All three of those events, we're expecting trains. All three of those events were proposing from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., much like Jazz, closing one hour before it happens in order to allow vendors, food trucks to set up safely. And all of these dates have been discussed with the business community, so nobody's in the dark at all about what would be happening.
How do they feel about that? That's a lot of Saturdays.
It's, well, it's three Saturdays, and.
Yeah, and when you get to Jazz Festival and the mile-long yard sale, we get up to half a dozen.
Sure. No pushback at all, actually.
None?
Nope. So these are all events that we did this last year, and we just kind of have tweaked them a little bit, and we think that there's just a very, very good chance that they're going to be bigger than they were this year, and so just trying to plan accordingly. Because last year, we just kind of monitored the situation and only used the very, very inner and just blocked off individual parking spots and didn't close any of the street. But now, feeling like it's going to be bigger than it was this past year, just trying to plan for safety purposes.
And we're going to do two yard sales? Are we going to do two?
We're going to do two yard sales. We're leaning towards the second one being more of a Christmas-themed one to try to, our spring yard sale is always knock it out of the park. Our fall yard sale is very hit or miss. Usually, the fall is excellent if spring was a weather flop. So how can we make both of those knock them out of the park? And so we're talking about, okay, well, people are already doing Christmas shopping, so what if we tweak this a little bit to make it an open-air Christmas mile long?
Okay, we, we approved several years ago, of course, we don't always unapprove it, but closing for the yard sale. So those are kind of locked in stone unless we do something to change it. So you're asking for three more Saturdays?
Yeah.
From nine.
May, March 26th, May 14th, September 3rd.
Okay, and no pushback from any of the merchants?
None. I talked to everybody in person to make sure.
Okay.
Do you want the dates for the yard sale? Someone asked.
I know. April 9th is the first one, and it's the first Saturday, and October's the second. I'm sorry, that escapes me right now.
Okay.
And those, all events for the entire year that are already on the chamber's calendar are on WatertownTN.com. And it, we're trying to keep all the details on there as up-to-date as possible.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on the three additional events? We're not approving the events. We're approving the closure of them. We're not approving the events, we're approving the closure of the.
Well, if it's okay with the business, I don't see nothing wrong with it.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, that's the way I feel too, if it's alright with them, I don't, I don't want any more Friday night calls.
You and me both, I, as a business owner on the square, I, I want to disrupt business as little as possible, I want everybody to continue.
Yeah, and we want everybody to do good because it's our sales tax money.
Exactly, exactly.
So, we need that. Alright, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? Let me ask, Grant, has anybody else got questions on it?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else from the public? Everybody else out there? Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just have a question about that closure, um, for the yard sale, it wouldn't happen one year that there was no businesses set up on our side of, our side being West Main Street
Mm-hmm.
From Presbyterian Church forward, um, but they closed the square, I mean, they closed that street. And they wouldn't let me come back from the bank, from the dump to go home. They wanted me to go left and go all the way around the square and go back up seventy or some ridiculous thing. And even though you could see from there, the officer that was there would not allow me to make a right, I mean, I did because I told him when I was going to the dump, I'm going to the dump, I'll be right back. But other, other neighbors didn't get that privilege, so I would like to make sure there's some common sense when they do that traffic control, um, that they don't block it just because somebody said we're blocking this road at this time, that they look around and see that there's either vendors or not vendors and let the residents go home.
The police hierarchy is behind you, I feel fairly confident they've heard this, so.
And then, uh, the bank, uh, when you close this, this squares for these events, can you still get to the bank?
Yeah, they have that side parking
Uh-huh.
There and, and of course, there are drive-throughs of them also.
Okay, so then people won't be blocked from that, that don't know that these events are going on, they're just doing their day-to-day.
Yeah.
They aren't really a part of the big picture.
Because you can go down, it's not Pearl Depot, and still get to that bank parking. Now, they have to walk across the street, they won't be able to park right in front of the bank when the square's closed off. But Depot's not closed off to my knowledge until you get to the square in turn, so they still are able to turn left into that parking lot.
Okay.
And if, if I'm not mistaken, mistaken, we, what we just voted on was closing the, with the exception of the Jazz Festival, all the other closures were only the inner circle of the square, we're not closing Main Street in front of the bank.
Except for the Jazz.
Except for Jazz Festival, which was, would be Friday and Saturday.
And, uh, that's just in front of the bank, not on the side.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we had these discussions many, many years ago, Hal was probably on the council then, when we first started this, we had police and fire on the, uh, square and our concern was if you get a fire call or a police call or even ambulance call, I should say, we gotta be able to get to all points in town. So when we lay out that traffic pattern, the dump is important, but it's more important to get to you if you have, if you fall or something like that, so.
Oh, yeah, but if it's obvious that there's no business happening on that end of the street
Yeah.
That shouldn't have been a fixed thing at that, at that junior high terminal.
Yeah, we, we should be flexible on that, I agree.
To her point though, is it possible that, I know people show up at, early in the morning, but I don't know if there's a way that we can't make it one-way because I think what happens is, is people park on both sides of the street and then it becomes just a one-way deal. And so, I don't know if it's, I know it's kind of, logistically, it would be hard to block off one side.
One-way on Main Street, or the, or the square.
Right.
One-way going eastbound to the square and then one-way going westbound to the square.
Yeah, but not from eight AM forward.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, is I think it's just, people get there so early and then it, people park all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's something to be discussed.
What you're talking about is people parking before that and leaving their cars there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think what happens is, is people park on both sides and then the, all of Main Street just becomes a one-way deal.
Whether we want it to be.
And what she's saying is, is she has to go, which, and I understand if you're going one-way, that's what you have to do, but I think.
Well, if that happens, that's relevant, but it didn't happen on that particular year. There was nothing on our side.
And since the year you're talking about was actually the year that we actually had too many officers that, I would say, you and I have talked about this a little bit, Interlight and I have, there were too many officers that day, it was, it was a little bit overzealous planning, I feel like, honestly. Um, but something we're trying to have arranged by the springtime to try to avoid the parking crazy is to have set parking areas ahead of time and to redo some of the traffic lane a little bit and have shuttles running so that we don't have to block off what we have had to block off, we can be a lot more specific about what that looks like, so that's still being worked out, but that's the plan. So that our residents can still have regular life.
Right.
But in, in Nutzler's can shop without interrupting everybody's life. So, it's, it's being worked out.
Any other comments on the public? Alright, we'll close that and go, uh, Chief, y'all are first up tonight, Chief Laney. And while you're coming forward, I promised this lady at the basketball game last Friday night, I would praise, uh, the department, she was praising the department, for an incident that occurred in her shop several weeks ago, perhaps months, that she had forgotten to tell me about it and she said, I wish she would mention how pleased I was with the response of the police department. And, uh, so I wanted to, I'll say that, I need to remember, I, I'll say this, uh, publicly and, uh, uh, that's a good thing to hear, so. And I'm sorry, I don't remember more of the details, but they'll probably come to me, maybe I kind of fade in and out, so.
I hear you.
Alright, I'm sorry, Chief, I got into your time there.
Everything, again, was pretty much standard. One thing I would like to show though is, on our incident reports, our incident reports are things, you know, that are serious enough that we have to do reports on.
Yeah.
Uh, there's only nine for the whole month of December and of those nine, six of them are accidents. Uh, there was one death and, uh, let's see here, one civil dispute and one neighbor dispute, which says a lot for the, the guys that's out there patrolling the neighborhoods, you know, we don't have any thefts, we're not having vandalism, we're not having problems, you know, that a lot of places is having.
Yep.
And I think a lot of it is due to the fact that, um, especially our night shift has really been, been working the streets really, really hard.
That's very good, and of course, in December, that's supposed to be the time of peace and goodwill, so hopefully it was for a little while.
Let's hope it's.
Hopefully it'll continue.
And now another thing I had, I think you're gonna address later, so.
I'm gonna address it now, when you're ready. Anybody have any questions of the chief? Anybody? Alright, um, this is something that I should have, uh, well, I couldn't have brought it to you in December, but, uh, I should have done something with it sooner. We've got, and the Sheriff's Department does our dispatching and then they have raised an issue about some of our radio traffic, is that it? And some of our equipment? Am I saying this correctly?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, uh, what we've got here is a proposal to, uh, buy some new radios, uh, portables and, uh, things that will help us deal with that, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, especially compatible with the new system that's going in.
Yep.
And one of the things, the key thing is, uh, when I spoke with, uh, Chief Hal and some of the other things, uh, we currently, I have a biopar radio put in service so they have something to use during the day, but some of the older radios we have do not go to channel two. Well, their channel one is the primary for everyone, but when they have a hot call or something and they cold the air, our guys are on the traffic stop and they have no way to communicate with them other than call on my phone because we don't have channel two and some of the vertexes would not be compatible with some of that. And then when they go to the new system, none of our radio, handheld radios will work, period. And they, they look to go, and Mayor, you probably know more, but probably the first or the third quarter is what the radios are about to do.
Yeah.
So at that point, everybody's gonna have to, um, some kind of digital radio that's compatible with that system. And these radios are the same ones the county has and also Chief Hon and you all approved for the fire department.
The, uh, the county is about to spend three point seven five million dollars on a new radio system for the Sheriff's Department and the, uh, uh, WEMA folks. And so that's the good news and for you're sitting there thinking, what's this gonna cost us? Here's the good news, folks, for us to be compatible, it will cost us ten thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I have no problem recommending that to you. Uh, it's not in the budget, the budget can handle it, it's not a problem, but if, uh, it can also probably come out of the ARP money, which I'll have a little bit more to say here in a few minutes on that. So, um, I certainly will recommend that we purchase this. There was a rebate that I'm told, uh, uh, probably expired December thirty-first, they're gonna try to get the rebate, uh, you know, blame it on COVID or stupid mayor, whatever it takes to get the rebate, but if not, we'll still do it, I still recommend it, so, uh, that's my recommendation to you that we do that, we don't need our guys out there where they can't communicate with their dispatch.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Alright, is there a second?
I have a
Oh.
Question. Is this the same technology that you had previously discussed about three or four months ago?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
But some of that technology was the video camera system.
Right. But you had said then that we had to have upgraded here, it was even more important than the video, but once we get this done, then we could go back to the, to discuss the video.
That's correct.
So this is still, and the video that you had already looked at, is it compatible with this?
Everything is compatible.
Okay, then I will second that.
Okay. Questions, discussion, comments?
See, radios we got, is, is there any value to them to trade in or whatever? I mean, it's, it's a waste if we can't use them.
I doubt it because the reason I say I doubt it is because the frequency system that they're using, that it's using now, is gonna be obsolete.
If we could use them, it would be, it'd be that much.
Yeah.
Either that, if we're not gonna use them, we'll have to declare them surplus, get rid of them.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If, if the council will give you permission, you know, I can ask these folks if we could possibly get some value for trade-in, but, you know, it being government property, we can't just say that, so we'd have to have some permission to
Yeah.
To investigate that, to say, hey, here's all our radios, would you give us five hundred or whatever they would be worth?
Yeah, I think you ought to say about the trade-in, but if you don't and we can't use them, we'll come back to future date and declare them surplus.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know what kind of value they'd have, but we'll put it out there. Alright, other questions, comments? Good discussion. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I have one more thing, uh, a couple, uh, meetings ago, we had spoken about, um, the THSO stuff, uh, that is going great, but, uh, MTS, when they came in, I spoke with you and you thought that there was a record where we had adopted the rules of the road.
Uh-huh.
And that's something we really need to check on because some of the citations that we write are in that and if we haven't adopted that, it could be an issue at some point. And that's from the MTS people, not from many. So, but I think you've mentioned it.
But the rules of the road are state law.
Well, they have.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I'm arguing more with MTS.
Right.
If it's a state law and it goes from Bristol to Mountain City, it's Bristol to Memphis, as people say, why would we have to adopt?
Because we're a civil court, we're not criminal court.
Right.
It's the civil aspect of it and some of the civil things that we write
Okay.
Are criminal and have arrestable consequences for them, for them that go into our court.
That can't go into our court.
Like speeding.
Okay, but, but we can't put anybody in jail in the city court.
Right. Yeah, I understand that, but the speeding itself, they say speeding
Yeah.
Is something that a civil court can't hear unless you adopt the rules of the road.
Okay. Well, if we need to do it, we'll do it. Yeah, well, I'll bring those back next time.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm sorry I've forgotten that, you hang that one on me too. Okay, let me make me a note of that. Okay. Alright, anything else, guys? Police? Alright, we'll go to Dale Smith, he's next up. Thank you, Chief, Assistant Chief.
Alright, I don't have a whole lot for you, uh, this month, uh, we did get the pump in for, uh, Cornwell Avenue, um, hopefully we'll get that installed tomorrow if nothing comes up. Um, other than that, I don't have a whole lot for you.
Okay. Alright, any questions of Dale? I'll have some comments on our sewer project here in a minute.
Okay.
I'll wait, get these reports out of the way and, um, any questions of Dale? Or his, or his assistant?
That contract that, uh, you brought up last month, I don't know if.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it in February and I had it on my list of old business, but I want y'all to be prepared to vote on that, uh, I think it's important that we have some continuity and consistency here as we go into this sewer project. And, uh, I've been doing some reading today, there's a lot of money out there in that ARP, so we may have some possibilities of doing some other things. But, uh, I, I'm, honestly, I still don't understand it, but there's a lot of money at, out there. So, anyway, I wanna get our share. Question? Alright, Dale, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, Chief Hon, fire report, he's given us one for, uh, December and one for a yearly total and I always like to get that and I like to share that with my county friends because I don't think they realize how much we do to help them.
Quite a bit. We've got, uh, as the mayor said, we've got two reports here, uh, in December, our total was sixty-six calls that we responded to in December, uh, twenty-eight of those were in the city and thirty-eight of those were in the county. Uh, for the year, the whole year total last year, um, we responded to six hundred and sixty-five, uh, total calls, uh, within the city, that was two hundred and seventeen and four hundred and forty-eight of those were, uh, in the county. So that's, um, increase of about thirty-eight calls from, uh, twenty-twenty to twenty-eight, or twenty-twenty-one, uh, was about a thirty-eight call increase, so.
Okay. So that's, uh, basically two calls a day, isn't it?
Yes, pretty close.
Well, you got it there, one point eight two, I need to read. Um, questions, comments? Alright, let's go on to something else I promised I'd bring up this time and that is, uh, we had awarded bonuses before for, um, uh, essential personnel and we did not do fire department. Uh, so my recommendation to you tonight is, Chief has given me a list of eligible people, there are twelve people that would be eligible for the full amount and four that started after January one of this year. So my recommendation is, is that we give them a one-time ARP bonus of four hundred dollars per fireman and two hundred dollars for the four that started after January first. Um, and it will be in the form of a bonus, when we did it for the employees, of course, we have matching social security and all of that, but we don't, uh, we don't pay our firefighters, so this will be in like a Christmas bonus. In fact, I've got it put into Christmas bonus line item because there's not any other line item for it that I could find, um, quick, steady. So, uh, that's my recommendation to you, there'll be two parts to it. First is the actual resolution that awards the bonus, so I'm recommending that to you. And it would be payable Friday if approved tonight.
I'll listen.
Okay, just a second. Comments, discussion, questions? We appreciate what they do very much. And this volunteer fire department, we got a previous chief back there for many years, current chief, and we've had a couple of other chiefs, John's brother Bill was the chief for a while. Our department's always been right up there and proud of that. That's, that's something that's been very consistent here for a lot of years. So, you ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the second thing, and that'll get the bonus, the second thing is the actual appropriation resolution, that'll have to be approved twice, but we'll do it like we did, uh, the employees will approve it tonight, give the bonus, approve it next time. So I'm recommending that to you as well. That is a total, I think, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's a total of, uh, $5,600.
I make motion to approve.
Discussion, comments, questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, and Chief, I took your recommendation on that individual we talked about.
Yes, sir.
I thought, I appreciate your point.
Any other questions?
You want to push?
We are, we have the fish fry starting the first Saturday in February, so.
What are your hours now?
It is, uh, 11:30, we say 11:30 to 5:30 or sellout, so we try to go to, to 5:30 or as close as we can.
And it's first, we're back first Saturday in February.
We are, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, some, some items of old business, some of which we've already touched on, Dale's contract. Uh, I, I said at the last meeting, I'll say it again tonight, if you have questions or things you want, uh, wanna talk about or you wanna add more in there or whatever, let me know. Uh, otherwise, I'm gonna bring you the proposal that he gave us, uh, I guess in December, perhaps November, for us to act upon. We didn't elect, uh, another councilman tonight, so the selection of a vice mayor, we'll have to wait till we get a full complement of folks. Our audit of last year, the draft is complete, I have seen it, I do not, it has not been filed with the state yet. Uh, we had a very good year, uh, we retired some debt, we increased our assets. Uh, we had a good year with the one exception, though sewer, uh, water and sewer will show that we took in $5,000 less in revenue than we spent. Now, that's not so because some of the things that I count as revenue in the budget and you count doesn't go into the calculations, uh, for there. So I was disappointed in that, but I think we fixed that with the water and sewer increase that we did a few months ago, so. But anyway, I'm still, bottom line is, they'll call me to come back to Nashville. And, uh, that'll be fun. Let me go to the sewer project, uh, it's kind of been on hold the last 45 or 60 days. We hit a snag on, and I hope I word this correctly, we hit a snag on the easements because we had the easements designed to be 50 feet off the creek bank. And the folks who own the property that we need the two easements from, at least one of them didn't like the idea of giving up that much of their land, even though it's just an easement, practically they're limiting what they can do with it. So they asked us if we could move it in closer. Our engineer, Steve Jones of Water Management Services, went back and checked and in fact, the easement that was granted to Wilson County Water Authority 15, 18 years ago is the one that's 50 feet out there. Uh, so it wouldn't be us, so we could actually back ours off to 10 feet within that. And to bring it within 40 feet, uh, be 40 feet off the creek bank, the significance of bringing it off the creek bank some distance is the practicality of getting the line dug and laid, so you don't have to put equipment in the creek and get those permits and that type of thing. So Steve, uh, is going to submit a modified permit to the state, he says he doesn't see any problem with that. I'm gonna go back to the folks that own the two easements that we need and tell them what we're doing. He's supposed to be sending me an updated drawing of that. I don't wanna leave you out, Caleb, but she's sitting over by herself, I keep looking this way. So, uh, I think that may resolve itself. Anthony Hall had mentioned to me that they didn't want anything out 50 feet in their property, but they've already got something there, but it won't be us. So we'll be back inside that and I'll go back to talking to them. I would sure like to have a proposal I'll bring to you in February to, uh, put this to bed, that. So, uh, Steve said he would send me the permit, it had not come in, I checked right before we came out here. Uh, and I promised him if approved tonight, I would send it back immediately as soon as I got it. So, uh, I'm asking you tonight, the only action I need from you is to approve me signing that modified permit request so that we can get it into the state paper. I think we need to do that. So I'm asking for you to approve that.
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
Approved, yes.
Yeah.
Modified easement.
There you go, is there a second?
Second.
It's actually a modified permit, we don't have these with you. All right, got motion, a second, comments, questions, discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie's. Turntable, just a brief report, Congressman John Rose, with the help of his assistant Ray Render, will be here to meet with our turntable committee Thursday afternoon at 2:30. And, uh, has, uh, I've been told can spend about an hour with us, so. There'll be a presentation made on what we're proposing to do and, and what we need and hopefully he will be able to get us some help out of, out of Washington perhaps. That's the goal anyway. So, uh, that meeting will be held Thursday at 2:30. It's all the old business I have, let me, let me, just a couple of items of new business, we've already covered some others. The young lady sitting back here in the black jacket has the opportunity to be an intern here through Cumberland University. She needs 150 hours to get her college credit, I believe this is the last semester for you. She'll be a college graduate before long and we'll be helping her. She has started to work last Tu, last Thursday and she's worked again today. She can work on Tuesday and Thursday. And, um, so I went ahead and asked her to go to work and subject to y'all approving it tonight. The, um, terms of the internship are that, um, she has to, she has to do 150 hours, only 30% of that, no more than 30% can be clerical. So she's gotta do some stuff that's significant and she's already done some, I'll tell you about that in a minute. The proposal, um, set on there that, uh, we could pay or not pay, I do not like the idea of asking somebody to work and not giving her a little something. Of course, she's getting the college credit, but I put on there, subject to y'all's approval, that we would pay her $10 an hour, which basically will cost us $1,500 for a, is that right Haley? 150 times 10? Y'all know Haley, Haley's the daughter of Jeff and Amy Tunks, older sister of Ally. And got three or four dogs last year, is that right? Okay. But, uh, she's a Watertown girl, she's, she's been around here and she's, uh, she'll be an asset to us over the next three or four months. So I recommend to you that we approve that internship.
What is your major?
Business administration.
I make motion to approve.
Is there a second? Got a motion and a second to approve that? Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye as well, that's unanimous now. I said that she's already done some significant stuff. As you know, we're still looking for a backhoe. And one of the first things I asked Haley to do was to get on the computer because folks her age tend to be more savvy at that than folks my age. And so she, I asked her to find bids statewide or anything she could find on gov deals, anything like that. She has provided me some information on that that I'm gonna discuss with Bob and she even added another one today. And then I asked her to take a look, uh, we need a new service truck, not a new one, but a, a used one. And she has found three or four of those and Bob has found the same one you showed me. I think he likes that. And, uh, so we may have something to do there in the next few days. And then she has gathered some information for me today on the amount of money we are spending on upkeep of our police cars and it's pretty significant. And frankly, folks, um, and then, and that'll probably be coming to you in the next few months or at least in the next budget, it's time for us to maybe buy at least a new vehicle. So, uh, we'll be talking about that. But, but Haley's done a good job already and she worked today and helped Lisa. And so I'm glad to have her on board and she probably works faster than I can think of things for her to do. But if y'all got ideas, let me know. I don't wanna, I don't want her doing busy work, I want her to do something she feels like is meaningful and that helps us and that does, so. I've rambled a lot tonight, I'm, I'm sorry.
While we're still talking about the city, um, I know City Bob left, but did we officially hire Mr. Lassiter or is he still on an interim part-time?
Uh, he is working full-time, I don't know if we hired him or not. Do you remember, did we?
Okay, because the last I heard he was kind of part-time, then I know we were thinking about like kind of a trial, trial full-time and I didn't know if we've gone to that yet.
We did, but now we're in another situation with Burke and Burke is working, Burke, Russell, is working three days a week and, uh, Bob's pleased with his work, so I may be coming back to you on that. The good thing about this, uh, folks is, uh, these are two young people, got strong backs. You know, some of us around here are getting a little long in the tooth, so it's good to have some of those folks here. The only other thing that I've got, well, two things, um, I hope you, they got the budget report, Lisa, did y'all send that out? Y'all got it, okay. Our general fund's in good shape, we're, uh, at this stage of the year, we're ahead over a quarter of a million dollars. Um, our parks and recreation is a little in the hole and I'm investigating that. I suspect we just haven't reported yet all of our receipts, but I'll get you an answer on that. And our water and sewer fund is plus $60,000 right now. Now, that's the way we figure actual money, how they figure it down there is different. But we're in good shape right now on that, so, uh, just wanted to bring you up to date. If anybody had any questions, I'll try to, uh, I will tell you that the, uh, the general fund's in good shape, sales tax and everything, but a lot of the, uh, portion of that money is, uh, this money that's coming out of Washington and Nashville, so it's nice to have. Our next meeting, if we hold to it, will be February the 15th, that is the earliest, the third Tuesday can be in a month. With your permission, knowing how late we met tonight this month, I'd like to go to the 22nd for that meeting if, if that would work for y'all. And Laura, I think that gets us past basketball season.
Well, it's still districts, but I think.
It's still what?
That it's still districts.
Okay.
That the last, the district game is that one, I think we'll be okay.
I've been to, yeah, yeah.
Well, the 15th is the beginning of the district, it's the second night, I think, you know, we wouldn't be okay on the 15th, but I think we'll be okay.
Okay, well, full disclosure here. I like the idea of meeting later just because we're not meeting in three weeks, but I do plan to be out of town that night if I can make it, so, um, don't vote, don't vote to help me out, but I'd appreciate if you did, so. But anyway, is, is that all right? Okay, all right, so we'll schedule it for the 22nd, of course, subject to COVID and could still be snow, I guess, or anything else, so. Strange times, take care of yourself. Okay, let's go around the table, Howe?
I've been riding around some in town. I know the police is working some on these people that's got enough junk to fill up two or three dumpsters. And it's some houses around town we need to take some look at. I mean, it's not right for some people in town to try to take care of the property and others just let it go. We got old cars, uh, parked everywhere, rotten down, uh, and we just, we need to look at that.
Mr. Willis, Officer Willis?
We, we need to, and really seriously look at it, not just go by and say, yeah, that's. At the mess.
We had, uh, we have, from the incidences that we had recently, we cleared those up. And what we had, put it, kind of put it in place is that we're gonna give everybody a letter. Well, the letters go out, some get returned, some don't, you know, and then that letter would give them X amount of days to get something cleaned up. And, you know, due with COVID, Christmas, uh, you know, that's not making an excuse, but the next step is going out and saying, hey, we've got this letter, here it is, you know, have more systematic approach, just like you say, you know, give somebody a chance first.
I know a few years ago, my daughter lived on Main Street down there, Bobby Fisher, he had an old car out in the back and evidently they thought it was mine. And I think all the police are gonna carry me to the station because of the car. And it, I didn't even know it, I, it was Bobby Fisher's and, and, uh, and they went and talked to him and he eventually moved it, but we need some of that all over town.
Did we ever decide on anything about maybe getting the codes put on the website? I know that was mentioned whenever all that got brought up.
We hadn't, we hadn't gone any further with it, Caleb, I'm sorry.
I can give Haley something to do.
But if.
Sounds like an intern, sounds like an intern assignment to me.
You know where they're at.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you, I can name you hypodermesma right now without any trouble at all, but I think you know where they're at.
And Mr. Willis has done a great job with going around and finding the places, I know.
Maybe they just.
With the cold weather, I mean, some people might say he has, some people might say hasn't, but he has addressed some problem areas.
Maybe the police need a little muscle behind them to take care of it, you know.
But I like the idea of giving the letter of the warning before actually seeing that presence is very intimidating sometimes, so that kind of.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, if the city can't, they clean up the property like that and then, uh, charges a lien against the property or something?
There are some provisions in there.
That's, I think if, if this is not taken care of, it's some, some property in town that needs to be done.
Well, I think, I think Officer Willis, if you turn him loose, I think he'll.
Good.
He'll be what, excited?
He'll be excited, sir.
Yeah, good.
He can be aggressive.
Good.
I've had to field a couple of calls though. All right, what else, huh?
Uh, that's it.
Steve?
And nothing this evening, other than our national championship?
I wondered if that was gonna come up. I thought you'd be wearing all red and dressed, dressed out like Santa Claus.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, I wasn't that bold.
Oh, okay. Well, they played well. They played well. Laura?
I don't have anything to say.
All right, Caleb? Will and Christie's not here. We, uh, you know, things are, we got a lot going on in this town, we got a lot going for us in this town, we really do. Uh, I just hope we can get through the, the COVID and get, uh, get back to some semblance of normalcy, we can open the city hall back up and, and, uh, get back to, but it may be a while, but still, we've, uh, we got a lot going on. We've heard it tonight about events that are going on. As we said last time, we had a fantastic Christmas parade, 4th of July will be here before you know it. And, uh, we always have a big time on that. Baseball, softball, T-ball season's right around the corner. Bob told me tonight, fixing to order some dirt, so we'll get that brand-new dirt in there just in time for the spring rains to spread it. And, uh, but a lot going on in this town, we all like to be proud of and like to be thankful for, really thankful, so. Anybody else around the table got anything? All right, how about that famous motion?
Some move?
We're out of here.